Welcome to the second half of 2023 Media Startup Demo Show. In the beginning, we're going to have six Japanese startups to be on stage and to present their business. There will be no Q and A for the open for the judges, but you can still enjoy their presentation in four, six minutes to understand their business or their products. So I'm going to invite the first startup to the stage. Let's have Anik, welcome.
Thank you very much, everyone. It's very honor to be here. My name is Takahide Kasai. I'm a CEO of Anik. So Anik was founded in 2019, and so this is our fiscal year. So our vision and mission is to help brand owners to maximize their IP value through combining physical experience and digital experience and bring the brand global. So our focus is on the Japanese anime and manga industry. So we have been collaborating with more than 60 IPs, and the number of the IPs is increasing and becoming more and more powerful. So why we are focusing on the anime industry is because anime industry is the most attractive market to invest in terms of the total available market size and its average growth rate. So the anime industry is expected to reach 60 billion US dollars in 2030. So I will repeat this number, 60 billion US dollars. This is huge, right? And the average growth rate is over 10%. This is high, actually. So anime industry, please don't miss it. This is very, very rare opportunity for you to invest. So that's why we are focusing on the anime industry. So our business model is very simple and very lucrative, actually. So we borrow the IP from the IP owners. It's the licensing contract. And we make it the physical and the digital goods, and we sell those products to consumers directly. So most of our revenue is from the consumers, and we give back the revenue share to IP owners. So the gross sales goes to 8 to 10% to IP owners. That means over 90% will remain in our company. Even deducting the cost of goods sales, our gross margin would be around 30 to 40%. So we have three competitive edge. So first one is that we have outstanding track record with collaborating with Japanese IPs. So in the digital side, we have number one track record collaborating with the powerful IPs. So the track record will lead to deeper know hows to deal with the IP that will lead to the stronger trust, stronger reputation from IP owners, and which will lead to the more pipeline we're gonna have. And those good cycle is going on right now. The second point is our digital capabilities, which differentiate from our products from the normal existing products. So for example, on your right hand side, this is our t-shirts featuring with TikTok and Instagram. This is not the normal t-shirts because when you scan the design on the t-shirts, you can enjoy the digital effect on your TikTok or Instagram effect. So this is a product for the costume players. Because on the real life, in the real life, it is very, very difficult to express your favorite character's special move. For example, Dragon Ball or Demon Slayer's, they have the fantastic special move for each characters, but it's very, very difficult to express those special move in real life. But using the digital technology, everybody can enjoy those favorite character's special move very easily. So that's why we gonna put it on the physical side with digital effect. So that's the our the products which differentiate from the normal t-shirts. So the third one is the our sales channel. So the most of the Japanese licensee is focusing on the Japanese market, but we have been expanding our sales channel outside of Japan. This fiscal year, we are expected to have the US dollars 4 million revenue, and the 1 million is from mainland China. And from next year, we're gonna have the revenue from the States and hopefully Taiwan. So our sales channel differentiate us from the other licensees as well. So we are raising the capital right now in order to strengthen the logistics capability in China and US. And also, we wanna expand the sales channel in Taiwan. So that's all for my presentation. And I'm here for raising the capital and looking for the business partners who is interested in selling the anime merchandise. And also, those who love anime and manga, please do come visit us. We are at the Global Pavilion booth. The booth number is GP151. So thank you very much for visiting.
They're looking for investors and business partners. So if you're interested in their business, feel free to visit them in the Global Pavilion. Next team we have Closer, welcome.
Hello, everyone. How is, how's it going? My name is Nick Sugiyama. I am the co-founder of Closer Robotics. We are an AI robotics startup focusing on automating the picking and packing and palletizing line. Our vision is to make people be more, work on more creative and valued items or at valued work. So this is not just manufacturing, but you're seeing a huge shortages of labor. And what that is, is as a result, labor costs are increasing, and it's also putting a lot of stress and strain on manufacturers to meet and exceed the productions. And this is not just for the small and midsize companies, but for the largest enterprises as well. And with that said, the traditional automation solution does not fit as it tends to require very large spaces, very high initial capex, and also the low software adaptability, meaning with consumer products, you tend to have many different products, whereas like automobiles, you don't. So it makes it very hard for manufacturers such as food, beverages, cosmetics, pharmas to be able to not only implement, but to be able to adapt and change to the different SKUs that go. So our solution is a very, very compact collaborative robot. There's the three points of differences. One being very compact, two being modular, meaning it could be mobile. As you can see, it has wheels on the bottom. And three, which we believe is a key, is that it's very adaptive. So if you looked at the history of personal computers, 50 years ago, average computer size was bigger than this room. Now you have a smartphone which allows you to work on so many different applications and work with so many different software. The same, we believe, will happen with robotics. So this is, I apologize for low volume, but this is the some video footage of the palletizing, and this is also for the picking and packing. As you can see, it's very, very compact. It's very, very small enough for an individual to be able to plug it in to existing lines. And depending on how busy the manufacturing lines are, you will be able to move it from one to another. And this is just a demonstration of how simple it is to use. You do not have to be a factory foreman, nor a person who is very, very aware of the engineering side. It's very, very intuitive to use. One of the key differences that we are designing, and this is something that is gonna be very, very a moat or a competitive advantage for us, is our ability in the software side. And a lot of, and as someone who is very, very, you know, who knows the robotics space, it's very fragmented among many different vendors. And so anytime you wanna change something, you have to basically go back and reroute everything, which takes lots of times and it takes more components, and as a result, higher costs. With Closer Robotics, outside of the robot arm, we have everything done in-house. So a lot of these things, we are able to be very, very adaptive and as a result, allow us to provide any kind of software changes as well as, you know, updates at a fraction of our competitors' costs. And this is very, very intuitive or imperative. As for consumer goods, you're gonna have many, many SKUs. You're gonna have to be able to update things. And so this is gonna be our core point of difference. The market opportunity is tremendous. When you look at the manufacturing space, it's almost 500 billion US dollars by 2030. We will be focusing here. But with that said, we want to utilize our core technology and go into warehousing as well as retail, our airports, and also into space. Currently, we have completed year two. We have, we are happy to announce that we are now in year three since two days ago. And happy to share this good news or, you know. And with that said, we want to continue to grow upon and grow our top line by three, four times every year. Our current traction for this past month is we are able to open our US office. We also sold our first unit to the largest suit manufacturer a couple of months back, and we're currently talking with the largest FMB many, uh, business in Japan for a multi-solution. Myself, I come from a finance background, and my co-founder, who is here, is a PhD candidate and he is the CEO. And together, we've been able to grow quite rapidly. We currently have five full-time, also 15 part-time. And so we've been able to really quickly scale up. So one of the things that we are looking to do as we enter 2024 is to incorporate Delaware C Corp. in the US next month. We are still debating whether to register a company in California or New York, and that'll be, you know, dependent on who our first customers will be. And one of the key goals that we have in mind is to surpass 500,000 dollars in sales and also sell our first solution outside of Japan. We also wanna partner with top robot manufacturers, which will help us in the supply chain. In order to reach that, we are looking for 3 million dollar investments with a minimum investment of 300,000. Those will allow us to continue to build upon our team with engineers as well as our sales team. And also build upon the Five Nation team to continually grow. So one of the things that we wanna do outside of funding as well is to partner, and we understand that Taiwan is very, very strong with the hardware manufacturing space. So we would definitely love to talk, and this is our contact info. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Nick. The third team we would like to welcome is Elephant Tech.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm So Lei Ze. I'm overseas sale representative, Elephant Tech. I have advanced director of new business developments globally for about 20 years, especially project around the region of Japan, Taiwan, Hong Kong, and China. Today, I'm going to talk about our PCB P flex can make your products become more earth-friendly. Our mission is making the world sustainable with new manufacturing technologies. We are the first and only mass producer of inject printed circuit board. Why PCB? Everyone is using many kinds of electronics every day. All electronics need PCB to make it functional, so PCB is related to everyone. The PCB market is keep 6% growing. What is wrong about PCB then? Apple says 10% of Apple manufacturing carbon footprint comes from bare PCB. This is the traditional method of PCB manufacturing process in the world. It needs so many process. It needs exposure process. It needs etching process. As the result, it wastes a huge resource of energy, metal, chemical, and water. 66 million tons CO2 from PCB industry every year. This is the trace of CO2 from semiconductor factory. This traditional PCB manufacturing methods has been using for over 80 years. It is a long history of environmental impact. It is time to stop and change. Our new technology, Pure Additive, can solve this problem because our method is very simple. Only nano copper printing process and electronics copper plating process. As the result, our technology is able to reduce copper usage 70%, reduce carbon footprint 75%, reduce water consumption 95%, and even also reduce cost. We have start mass production since 2020, supplying to different kinds customers applications in Japan. And now we are on the global expansion phase. Very famous Japanese company become our shareholder as well as partner. We have mass production inside of Mitsu factory in Nagoya, Japan. We have been running mass production successfully without any instance. We have great leadership from a variety of industry. And recently, we brought basin, achieved 10 billion Japanese yen. We use funding to expand our production of P flex, strengthen and domestic and overseas sale network, and further develop metal inject printing technology. We are expected to have next fundraising in the coming spring to expand our business. And including PCB, Taiwan is the major electronic producer in the world. I believe that in the next decades, Taiwan will manufacture the most earth-friendly electronic and continue leading the market in the world. We would like to build up the partnership with many companies. We have the first partnership with Lighton Guangbao, and we are looking for more. Our co-founder, Masa, and PCB expert, Seiji, are also here. We are exciting to meeting with you. Our booth is, our booth is GP152, and please come to visit us. Let's have business together and make the world sustainable together.
Thank you so much, Elephant Tech. Thank you. Just take your time. We have our fourth startup from Japan. Let's welcome Kototsuna, right?
So hello, everyone. We are Kototsuna, a travel tech startup from Japan. I'm Sam George, the CMO. So when we think about hospitality, hospitality needs tech, but it's not a fair fight. So you think about a typical hotel, regional hotel, five to 10 hotels, they only have five to 10 IT employees. Now, they're competing against someone like Acor. If there's any Acor people in the crowd, I apologize. Who is a monster, has 800 IT people in their team, and developers building their own applications, and somehow they're all fighting for the same tourist dollars. So what they need is our tech solutions that can compete or beat the traditional partners. So what, we, that's where we come in. So essentially, in 2021, we launched a digital concierge service live in Japan. So we're actually in 400 hotels. So it's Kototsuna in-room. It's a QR code based solution that goes inside the hotel, provides access to all the services. You can see some of the brands here. So we've been able to grow so fast because we have an exclusive partnership with JTB, the Japan Travel Bureau. It's the largest OTA in Japan. And to help us to grow, they have a dedicated sales team. So moving beyond this, what our clients have been telling us is that they want a sort of comprehensive guest experience platform. So what that means is not just focusing on the sort of in-stay solution, but also before, so pre-arrival and around sites. So our first sort of reaction to this was to start building products around chatbots. So in 2022, we built a chatbot. Maybe took six months. We were about to release it, and then ChatGPT is released. And we had a collective sigh, threw everything in the garbage, and then started over. So we built a chatbot based on ChatGPT in the last six months, which is essentially a commercial and technological layer on top, which the benefits are essentially gives us natural language in a variety of languages, so guests can speak in their own language and get hotel information easily. At the same time, because we're using ChatGPT, it allows us to get a bot up and running in less than a week, when a traditional chatbot takes potentially months. We have integrated human handoff, so for escalations, it can go to a real human person when necessary. And then we also have a dashboard system which gives the, our clients' guest insights to improve their services. It's a SaaS business model, charging between 200 and 2,000 US dollars per month. We can talk more about that maybe after the, after the presentation, if you'd like. So our target customers, moving from left to right, essentially our go-to-market first focuses on tourist information centers, so Taiwan Tourism Bureau, Tokyo Tourism Bureau, things like that, information provision. Then we're moving expansion into our hotel clients as well as attractions with things like zoo, malls, things like that. And then finally, moving potentially beyond hospitality. And I'll talk to you about why that makes sense in a minute. So phase one essentially is going deep, so we know hospitality. So on the one hand, we've already built a product that does information provision. So we're gonna be doing monetize the entire journey. So integrating with client transactions, so conversational bookings, modification, upselling opportunities, and then further integration. So doing things like, sorry, maybe on the way here, but local experiences, CRM, wayfinding. So after we go deep, then essentially what we have is a platform that is monetizable. So what we're gonna do is monetize the platform, so go broad. So one use case for this that we're already in conversation with is a potential contact center. So we're in discussion with our first pilot. Essentially, what this will be is a self-serve option so that clients can come to us, B2B clients can come to us, and create chatbots using our platform with a self-managed CMS and prompt enhancement. So our pilot projects right now, and you can actually check this out online if you'd like. You can go to Osaka Tourism Bureau's website and in physical locations in Osaka, essentially being able to answer questions about what to do in Osaka, all the information about events going on. And we actually scrape live information and provide live information to the guests who ask questions. And then we're also part of the Singapore Tourism Accelerator. We'll be building in the next few months a pilot project in a mall in Singapore, which essentially integrates with wayfinding and answers questions about information inside the mall. Post-COVID, we see there's a lot of potential. I'm not gonna go into too many details here, but essentially building across the guest journey, we feel like our market is 303 million. So our team is Japan-based with lots of global experience. So Genry Goto is our founder. He's actually in the audience today as well. He's a serial entrepreneur. He founded Kinko.com, which is a, one of the largest direct-to-consumer drug companies in Japan. IPOed in 2004 and then exited in 2014. So we have a lot of ex-Kinko here, as well as Accenture, IBM, and then myself from a Goto. So we are expanding into Taiwan. We think this is a key market for us. We actually had our first conversation with a hotel yesterday, and we have other meetings set up this week and next week. So, you know, we're currently building our go-to-market, and we're happy to discuss partnerships and clients and with venture firms. So come visit us in the Global Pavilion. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tim. We have our fifth team from startup. Welcome, Pio Lab.
Hello. My name is Jim from Pio Lab. We are a B2B green tech manufacturing pineapple leather from leftover pineapple leaves. So leather is everywhere, from the bags that you carry, the wallets you have, or even the chairs that you're sitting on. But it's actually one of the most polluted material in the industry. And it's actually, so 80% of the animal hides are actually wasted during the production process. 80 billion gallons of water are used for manufacturing leather. And 35% is the additional increase of risk of cancer for people working at the tannery factories. And this is where Pio Lab comes in. Our vision is to replace 1% of the existing leather by 2050. And our mission is threefold. We wanna upcycle food loss, we wanna prevent animal cruelty, and we wanna reduce carbon footprint. And we're aiming to track few of the UN's SDG goals, including number 12, sustainable production and consumption. Our business model is a simple one of B2B, where we source raw materials from farms and factories, where we take the pineapple leaves off their hands because right now they're burning them or either landfill them. So we're taking these off their hands, and we're manufacturing them using our proprietary technology and solutions into plain-based leather. And then we would manufacture into finished goods as well, such as furnitures, or bags, or shoes, or sporting goods for our customers. This is a huge market. We're talking about a market cap of over 400 billion dollars. And we have the first mover advantage here in Asia. So I don't know anyone else is doing this in Asia, and we definitely wanna continue to expand our footprint from Japan. We already have an office in Thailand. We're looking at Vietnam next. And we also are looking at US for next year. We are, we're also in discussion with the US golfing company to establish a joint venture where we would manufacture all the golf gloves and accessories, and they would manage all the marketing, branding, and distribution for us. So I think sports is another big one for this market. In terms of the advantages that we have compared to animal leather, we're much lighter compared to animal leather. We can customize the thickness as well, so it can go as thin as 0.6 mm to, you know, 1.6 mm, depending on the application that you're looking for. It's waterproof. The durability is up to 10 years because it's partially biodegradable, so we don't think this is going to last for a lifetime. So we tell our customers it's good for up to 10 years. It's scratch resistance, fire resistance, and we can also use, we can make sure that it's UV protected. So we have customers using our leather to make yachts and boat, which is constantly out in the sun. So we make sure that the performance, the color doesn't fade away over time. And obviously, it comes with a lot less environmental burden. These are some of the products that we have made. So obviously, all the fashion accessories, the leather apron in sports, the furnitures that are in the, in the hotels in Japan and also in Thailand. We love to come to Taiwan and look for some customers, whether it's restaurants, hotels, or even, you know, offices that are looking for furnitures. These are some of the customers that we have around the world. So we have, we're working with automakers in Japan. We have Red Bulls, as well as the Swiss Private Bank here in Taiwan, making souvenirs for their Christmas party and their VIP, for their VIP customers. We're now in discussion, we just came back from Europe. So we're in discussion with LVMH, Hugo Boss, and New Balance. So it's a very exciting space to be in right now. We have a very healthy margin. Our cost is between 20 to 22 dollars per meter. We're selling between 28 to 40 dollars per meter, and the cow leather is going at more than 60 dollars per meter, depending on what grade you're talking about. And our capacity per year is over a million meters, which is equivalent to, you know, 2 to 3 million tote bags. So we, you know, we have not maximized that at all. So we're looking for partners to talk to and work with. These are our traction as well as projection. So we made over 50,000 dollars in the month of October for our sales revenue. And we're hoping to get over 100 million dollars in the next five years with more than 50 paying customers. And then hopefully, every customer will come back with 1 or 2 million dollars of a contract. In terms of the impact that we have, 3,000 meters of leather has been produced. That means we use over 500 kilos of pineapple leaves. That means 350, 350 tons of CO2 reduced. For every customer that we have, we provide them with an environmental impact report so they know how much CO2 reduction they are creating for their customers. This is a team of six between Japan and Thailand. I'm a two-time founder, sold, had two exits in both food tech and agri-tech space, both related to sustainability. And we're looking for a million dollars to get us to 100 million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone who wants to get to know more, welcome to pay a visit to the Global Pavilion. Our final team is Sensing Robotics.
Hello, everyone. I'm Terek Itzkamoto, executive vice president, CFO of Sensing Robotics. We are software company to create for infrastructure inspection by cutting-edge technology such as UGV or UAV or IoT devices. I have work experience, chemical factory, so I really understand such as a big infrastructure inspection is difficult and hard work. So I want to change this hard situation. Our vision on for the future. Now Japan faces seriously problem such as decreased workforce, aging infrastructure, natural disasters. What should we do? I believe one answer is using robotics. We want to create such world, robotics move freely, do facility inspections, onsite management, disaster response. To achieve this, robotics must be easy for anyone. In that sense, In that sense, software is important. Our value proposition, this is the key architecture, our structure. We have set up three layers for customer. Sensing Core, it is our original platform, since established, we are, we need to continue. Sensing Core has a lot of function, for example, pilot, data server, AI. And the top layer is Sensing Apps, using by Sensing Core technology. And Sensing Apps is adjust for industry inspections. So customer, just a few clicks, inspection is finished. We are care about data flow. We, we are, our solution including data acquisition, data analyze, data application. We are created a value. More easy to imagine, this is a factory infrastructure inspection, the first preparation and the last reporting. Our product is add value all of the process. This is an automatic writing data and getting barriers structure very automatically, easily, and correctly. And for example, this is one of the application winter bin check. As you check this, it is automatically data acquisition, analyze, and management. This is our business model, we have two phases. First is a custom partnership, second is increasing business productivity. Firstly, we are consulting co-creation through this business model. We are dearly understanding customer pain point. Next is our performance. We have lot of co-creation with major customer in Japan. For example, analysis pipeline check, and chivalric power pedigree check, and Takenaka, and Hitachi, and also. It is a very major player and different customers. And our products already use barriers free, and our product produce quantitative effect. As a result, we have lot of corporate clients and partners and different industries. Last three about us. We founded two thousand and fifteen, now with a team member is one hundred and fifteen. As you, as you check the logo, we have lot of awards, adoptions, affiliations. This is our business management team, we have both experience. We have proven track record at a big company, and we are well-known that setup management. So we are good at to deal with a big company. I have, we welcome to opportunity for business partnership, please discuss, thank you for your attention.